...a little bit about an event that we're gonna be holding in the school on Wednesday, the fourteenth, and I asked her to come as one of our students and a student who has spearheaded this event that we're holding, so I asked her to give you a little bit of a background on it, so I'm gonna let you go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, hi again, I'm Taj.
Um, you have to leave it open a little bit just because it's probably.
Sorry, again, I'm Taj. The national walkout movement, I'm sure a lot of people are aware of it, but it came up after the Parkland shooting. We walk out, obviously, a couple of us students, myself and another senior at Winterfield, started a current events club this year, so these are the type of things we talk about. So we started talking about this as soon as the movement came up and had meetings with administration, so we contacted Lisa, obviously had meetings with Mr. Crombie, and it, when it became apparent to us that physically walking out of the building was a safety concern, we came up with an alternative plan to have a sort of event in the gym, it's gonna be a memorial, so we have students talking about each of the seventeen victims, we're going to have speeches about, you know, gun rights, gun reform, things like that, as well as a student performance, they're gonna sing a song, we wrote a pledge just for all the kids in the other, or all the kids in the gym who want to come, again, it's optional, just to say, you know, I pledge to make this a united community, I pledge to, you know, ensure school safety and on these grounds, et cetera, so that, oh, we do have an itinerary I didn't know that you printed it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, it's, we put that, we made it official today, this itinerary is just the general idea, we have a more detailed one, to send out to parents, kinda get the word out. It's been very difficult trying to communicate with everybody the plan, so obviously, we're all activists on this issue, so we're not doing nothing, but this, I think, is gonna be very impactful and educational and should really make a stand.
I, I think something important to note, as you and I have talked about it along with a number of other students, is that the students really, really feel strongly about this, and then it's a national movement for students to have their voices heard, and between the administration here at the high school and myself, we wanted the students to have a voice, but we also wanted to be realistic with them about, sort of, some of our fears about walking out of the high school, along with some of the rules that might get them sort of in trouble for leaving the building or going outside of the school on a day that they're supposed to be in session in school. So our goal was to not tell the students what to do, but more so educate them on the reasons behind following the school rules during the school day, we talked about the other movements that are out there during non-school days that are equally as important, but I think their openness, the students' openness to talking about a way that they could not just symbolize their sadness for the seventeen victims, their understanding of the need for school safety to be paramount in every school district, how, how do you do that and leave an impact? So we talked a lot about the, you can step outside the building, at the same time every other, you know, potentially every other high school student in the nation is stepping outside of their school building, and that's a, that's a symbol, you know, and a meaningful symbol that we're not gonna take this, we're not gonna stand for continued violence in school settings or at all. Or we could do something that was symbolic but also had meaningful benefit from it. So what does it mean when, when we stand outside and we stand there for seventeen seconds and walk back in?
Yeah.
People are gonna take a picture, we're gonna put it on Twitter, Facebook, and then we're gonna go back to class, some kids are gonna get in trouble for walking out of school. What if you guys, meaning students and girls, organized an activity that had an end result, and what would that look like? And I think the power that given back to the students to be able to come up with something, and then their collaborative sort of relationship back and forth with the administration to figure out what, what would work. What I was most impressed with was the students' understanding of our real fears as teachers, but also as parents, in having our students step outside of our building and into the public when every other student in the nation may be doing the same, and that's out there all over social media. So I guess if you're not of, of a sound mind and you're watching all of this, you know exactly where kids are gonna be at a certain time on a certain day. I'm sorry you can't take the fear out of me as a parent, or as a superintendent for that matter, but that's a scary, that's a scary thing to agree to as somebody who oversees a school district. So although I didn't agree with all the kids walking out of school, I did, I didn't disagree with them walking out of class for a purpose. So we made it into a, really a civic activity within the school that was approved and supported. And we did not make it a public activity because this is still school, we're having school during the day, we're still going through our daily schedule, and we're also mindful and understanding of students who don't wanna participate. And we talked, Mr. Crombie talked with the students about why that's okay, and, and how we need to, as individuals, respect both sides of that. And so we did a lot of work around that, so we're excited to see on Wednesday how that's gonna work out. I know that we have spoken with Senator Von Cory and Speaker DeLeo, so that they are aware, it's a very big topic at the State House, and the State House will be seeing the end result of what our students wanna communicate in a message that they all, yeah, many of them individually are gonna be taking the time in their advisory block, which is part of, happens to be part of the day anyway that day, many of the students who choose to will also be penning some information to folks at the State House to let them know how we feel and how they feel about the school that they're in, how safe they feel, what they believe needs to be changed, and they can say anything they want when they write it down on a piece of paper and get it up to the State House. So the senator has agreed to come by and, and take a peek at those letters, and we're hoping to help, have him help deliver those to the State House with a subsequent activity down the line of some folks from the State House coming in and relaying information back, which I think is okay. You know, oftentimes we do surveys and you never know what the end result of a survey is, you just fill it out. The, the students will be providing information to the State House, they really wanna know what gets done with it. So we'll be asking that folks from the State House come back and give the students some feedback about, you know, what happened with those letters you wrote, did they have an impact, what did they mean? So I'm, I'm super proud of the students, I think they have set an example for many adults, I can say that. And so I'd asked Taj to come and just, we're becoming close friends, to get that information out and, and to see if any folks here had any questions.
Can you talk a little bit about what you're hoping to accomplish on Wednesday?
Um, I think, well, one of our main, and I was just, we were just talking about this, one of, and my personally, our main goal is to sort of unite all of the students, the administration, everybody. A big issue within the school, within the students, part of the miscommunication that I was talking about, is that a lot of kids don't like that administration is playing like a role in the planning of this, but for us, the ones who are planning it, it was important to us that administration, like, they were on board, like, teachers, we wanted, obviously, there will be consequences if you walk out of the building, and there are teachers who can't take that risk, obviously, who can't say like, okay, that's fine, I'll take the suspension, like, they, there are teachers who can't do that, but this is an issue that affects everybody, it's not, it's like janitors, it's nurses, it's principals, it's anybody in the school building, so we wanted to do something that united all of us, educated all of us on any belief. I mean, our forum, we aren't pushing any certain agenda other than school safety, no, you know, about gun reform, there are some kids who disagree with, you know, upping gun control, and we are not pushing any bias on them. It's sort of just to all come together, realize that school is somewhere that we all need to be safe, no matter who you are in the building, because, I mean, even us especially, we have, you know, we have little ones, we have preschoolers, like, down, down the hall, and so it's, we just wanted everyone to be together, everybody to accept that this is the norm now, and everybody to recognize that there's not a single person in the school who wants it to be the norm, so, I mean, that's.
And I think you talked too about having a forum for individual students to express their opinions in a healthy way, in writing, and to be able to have that message heard when somebody picks that piece of paper up and does read it. So although they may not be standing in school in, in rally mode with a political message, and, and so they're in this sort of apolitical forum, but they are given time to express themselves in writing, and the people who are gonna read that are gonna be the people at the State House. So although it may be an activity done during the school day, there's still, that freedom of expression is very important, or the freedom not to express, because we have some students who do not want to, and that we are pushing the respect of that, and that, you know, it's a freedom, it's, it's your right not to express if you don't want to, and that's okay.
Ben has, thank you very much for working with the administration, I know that, I know that that was not a popular span with everybody.
I, I think it worked out for the best. I think that, I think that our revised plan is, is gonna have a lasting impact as opposed to, you know, walking outside of, like, the high school and standing there, which I know a lot of kids will take advantage of, but, you know, this issue is actually important to us, so.
It's nice to hear you also talking about bringing everybody together, I agree that this was important.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Great job.
I'm gonna let her go back to work if you guys don't mind.
Thank you.
Gotta go, another meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I will, I will bring you back to the back room, just in case.
Well, Joy and I are working on this tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
Any more delegates and visitors?
I was open.
Public comment?
How you doing? Good evening. My name is Rich Sepuni, I'm here as a parent and also the director of the Winterfield Butte Cross Program, and I just wanted to just come here and, and talk a little bit about, you know, the, the concerns we have as a program, we have as a concern, kind of a community from Millerfield. You know, we understand the great effort that has gone into this field, we understand that everybody wants to, you know, turn this over when everything is perfect and every single T is crossed, I is dotted, dotted, I get it, and I want that too. I said, but, you know, from, from our standpoint, as parents and, and as part of a youth program, it's a nonprofit, myself, coaches, parents, put tons of hours into, into this. We did, we started it six years ago, we put in tons of hours, you know, over the years, we try to get the kids excited. The last two years, as, as you know, just like everybody else, we've been on the road, you know, and, and the last two years, we're, we're at the lowest enrollment numbers that we've had. You know, the, the parents just, you know, when they have young kids, they get, they get sick of driving to Georgetown and Newburyport and, you know, wherever it is else they need to go. So, you know, I'm asking, I'm asking the committee to, to really kind of hone in and focus on whatever needs to get done for, for these kids to play on that field in the spring. Again, I know we're a youth program, but we are a feeder to the high school, we're an important part of the community in so many aspects. And, you know, we, we started our planning as a, as a youth organization for this coming season in November, and, you know, we, we have our meetings once a month, we talk about fields, this or that. Now, I understand, nobody's guaranteed us a slot on that field in the spring, but I think you'd all agree, it was kind of, you know, a good bet anyway that we would be there. So, you know, that's something that, that we kind of put on the table to the league that we're gonna be able to finally play at home, we, we talk about it with the parents, and whatever agreements need to be done, whatever meetings need to happen, we strongly encourage you guys to, to, to really push and make that happen, because to, to have a, have a spring season, another spring season without our, our kids on that field, you know, after everything that's gone in, the vote, the whole community, the community hours, this is a community field, not just a school field, we would, we would really appreciate that effort. We're willing to pay, we understand there's a cost associated with maintaining it, cleaning it, whatever it is, you know, we're, we're, we're on board with that, but we, we're just, you know, asking for your sincere efforts to get the people at the table to, to get this done so we can be on the field. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Just schedule-wise, is there any usually direct conflicts with, like, high school games or practices?
No, the whole, the whole league in general plays their games on Sundays, so that almost statewide, the reason they did that is because unless there's a, you know, catastrophe, a snowstorm like we're getting, it shouldn't be a Sunday game. In the event that happens, you know, at least, we would certainly be flexible, you know, if the high school had to play a certain game at a certain time, we get, you know, that the high school takes priority and, and those things happen, but in terms of scheduling, we try to schedule all our home games on a Sunday, there's only four, there's only four Sundays that we need, and then we need two hours either on a Friday or Saturday, just for, for three other games, you know? We'd love to have more if you'd allow us to have it, you know, if their rental agreement works, we could schedule some more games and be there, but at a minimum, that's what we're looking for, so.
Rich, did you make a request, did you make a request, specific request, or, and you return it down?
Well, what's hap, what's happening, Mr. Vecchia, is we're asking, you know, poor Lisa over here, hey, can you get us on the field, and as it stands right now, she says, I would love to, but they haven't turned it over to us, you know, so, so you can't say yes to us until the town figures out what they're doing in terms of a lease agreement. Now, at the last town council meeting, I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I thought I heard Terry say, it sounds like we're going in the direction, we're gonna lease the field to the school for the spring through, through December, you know, to give them their spring and fall sports. And to me, you know, I interpret that as lease it to them to see what the school department's gonna do with it, how are they gonna generate revenue, how are they gonna maintain it, you know, for both the community and for their high school. I, I, I see that as the whole package. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, my conversations with Lisa, I think you are, that we're proactively looking at rates, times, who's gonna, you know, you know, maintenance schedules, who's gonna do it proactively, so if it isn't till three weeks from now this deal is finally, you know, brought to the table and, and you guys can finally rent it out, that we at least have all that figured out. Our season starts, our first game is scheduled for, through the seventh or the ninth, whatever that Sunday is, so that would be our first, you know, hopeful home game at, at Millerfield. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Moving on with the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-sixth meeting.
Second.
Second by President Vecchia.
Just one thing, on the vote for the operating budget, it has me and Mr. Perrin on the GSA six.
Should be, yeah, it's on the call. Mr. Henshaw, you fixed that?
Yes, can you just tell me where that was?
The minutes of the February twenty-eighth meeting.
So the operating budget, FY nineteen, bad vote.
Yep.
Had myself and Mr. Perrin there, and GSA's, you weren't there.
Okay, thank you.
So I made a motion to approve the minutes, and we have a second by President Vecchia. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and one abstention. Moving on, we do have a warrant, an amount, SVW eighteen dash fifteen, the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We do have a payroll warrant, SPW eighteen dash sixteen, the amount of six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, three hundred and eighteen eighty cents, and we also have another one, SPW eighteen dash eighteen, the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-six cents. I'd like to make a motion to approve both of those together.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Same.
One abstention. We do have one budget transfer in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirty-five cents. I'd like to make a motion to approve that, so we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Moving on, Mr. Matucci with the superintendent contract subcommittee report.
Building grounds.
Oh, sorry, building grounds. We do have two buildings and grounds reports, one is by the WPGPTO for Lucky Bingo, the other is by the WMSPTO for the Full Court Frenzy. Both groups have all the proper paperwork and agreed to pay for the custodial fee. I'd like to make a motion to approve both requests and waive the rental. Second by President Vecchia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Mr. Matucci, moving on with subcommittee reports.
So we had a superintendent contract subcommittee meeting, we had come to an agreement, the committee and the superintendent with the contract, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any, any further discussion on Mr. Matucci's motion? Ms. Henshaw, please call the roll.
Mr. Caviano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Caviano?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you to the committee. I, I look forward to continuing this relationship for quite some time. I, I feel like I just started yesterday, to be honest, time has flown by. When I look back at twenty-three years of, of being in this school district, it went by in a minute, and then you leave and you have some time to sit back and reflect on what you had and sort of compare your system to another system, and your school committee to another school committee, and your students to other students. The community piece was big for me, and, and being given the opportunity to come back was certainly something that I had hoped for in the future. When I left, I had hoped that someday that I would be able to come back, I think I've said more than once, being a superintendent, I don't know that that was something that I dreamed about as, as a kid, to be honest with you. Being a special ed teacher was always in my wheelhouse and continues to be there, but this has been eight months of, of just a pleasure of working with people and looking at the teachers that we have and the students that we have, I mean, just listening to Taj and, and being able to go through that process as a superintendent now, the person who sort of is in control of a lot, with the exception of, of the school committee being above that, it's, it's been, it's been a great experience for the first eight months, and I am truly thankful for your agreeing to have me continue to do this, and I certainly won't let you down, and if I do, I would hope that you would tell me. As many at this table already know, I don't like surprises, didn't want a fiftieth surprise birthday party, so I look forward to working closely with the school committee to continue making winter public schools the best place to be. And I, and I have a ten-year-old that I'd like to get all the way up to graduation, so my commitment is here, and I appreciate the commitment that you have made to me. Thank you.
How do we compare other school committees?
I'll tell you, this is, this has been, it's been a pleasure, I have a little bit of PTSD, a little post-traumatic Sogus disorder, I must say, and it's, it's very different when you work with a committee, a governance committee that respects each other, that respects the role, that has strong communication skills, and that loves their community. There's a, that's a big piece of, of being a volunteer member, I'm sure you didn't sign up for this job because of the salary, we all know that, but I think that, that level of mutual respect and understanding of, of what the goal is, you know, yes, you're to approve the budget, to, to set policy, and to hire and fire the superintendent of schools, which means to make sure that the students of, of this community are getting everything they deserve, and displays like what's gonna happen on Wednesday with our students, as a superintendent makes you wanna prove that we have the best of the best here in, in our students and our teaching staff, but having somebody to, to oversee that and provide you with feedback and suggestions about how to keep that, that motion going is important. So I value the fact that the school committee does communicate and does ask me questions and does challenge me to do better for the school district and, and to keep our students moving forward, always reaching for the best. So you compare pretty well, you, you guys are way up there, and I appreciate that.
Moving on with the superintendent's report.
So, I'm up, so, I'm almost up. See, it's ready for a little loop. I think you're onto subcommittee reports first.
Where did I do that?
You did it.
Did you? Oh, that was it? That was the one subcommittee? Okay.
Want to do another?
Nope. Nope. So superintendent's report, so tomorrow, as many of you know from my, my call this afternoon at three, and then as well as another call at six-thirty, that we will not be having school tomorrow. The weather, I met with the chief of police, the fire chief, and the, a couple of other department heads, and it's very clear that we will not be able to navigate and it won't be safe to be here tomorrow. For Wednesday, we're not sure yet, but I will stay closely connected to the town departments as well to make sure that if we have to either cancel or delay for Wednesday, that we do that in enough time to give parents the opportunity to make arrangements for their children. And again, we have a, we have a.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? What does that do for our ending, school ending?
So as of, as of today, our last day is the nineteenth, Patty, I believe, so now we will go until the twentieth, if, if that's not a Saturday. What's the twentieth?
Yes, now, now June twentieth.
June twentieth. So we have used, that will be our fourth snow day, we have five built into the calendar, so as of right now, as of tomorrow, we, we will have used four.
Right.
And next, my superintendent's report was to speak about, yes?
I don't know, I don't even know if this is true, but that last storm, I heard some parents talking that it, it used to be that when you lived on the, on the water, that was, you were inevitably flooded all the time, but those that are living on the beach are, don't have that problem, but the water is displaced and now moving into areas that we didn't see it before, such as, like, Ingleside Park was, the ocean was there, I don't even know if that's true.
Sure, sure.
But there's a lot of flooding, that more than I've seen, I, I mean, in the last ten years maybe, but I could stand corrected, but that was a bigger problem than I had expected in trying to navigate around the city all the time, like, I'm sure parents have not got up to, but it was rather new, it's not, not just the wind or the snow.
Right, right.
It's the flooding.
It was, it was a different event, the, the last couple of events starting in January, you had extremely high tides.
Right.
In fact, the one, January fifth, was the highest tide ever recorded in Boston Harbor, and it affected the Bay Area just like the last several other storms, because astronomically the tides were higher at the same time. We, we made out like a champ by having DCR, that project that people have been complaining about because of the way it looks, was actually saving the entire area of, of the front beach, and in fact, if we hadn't had that done, Millerfield would have been underwater.
Right, so it was raised up.
It did do its job, but it's, this is becoming the new norm in the middle of town, and unfortunately, because of, you know, there's, there's a big debate about global warming, but the fact remains then, we're gonna be hit differently from now on, just, we have to get used to it.
And so doing, in doing the school closings, I'm in a superintendent's group with the superintendents on the North Shore, and we sort of watch each other to see what folks are doing, and Winterfield is sometimes a little bit different. Many schools closed, it was a Friday, I don't know the exact date, but a couple of weeks ago, and Winterfield stayed open because the fire and the police department and the DPW work so closely together that they, in communicating with me, reporting the tides and working with MEMA, I, they'll give me enough information that enables us to, to, and hopefully get it right, to see if our kids can, of course, safety is the number one, you know, reason for having school or not having school, and if our students can safely get to school, we like to have a school open, because a lot of our parents work and they have to go to work, and sometimes they have to leave students home alone, so we weigh that in to see, you know, if we shut our doors, then there's no option for students.
No, I, I loved your letter, I loved your explanation, I'm just saying that I think flooding may be under normal for us, that we didn't.
Both, both chiefs, the chief of the, of the fire department informed me that with the tides and for tomorrow, there should be no, no issue in terms, I shouldn't say no issue, but much less of an issue in terms of flooding than the last two storms.
Excellent question. Have you started to look into having the classes at home?
Yes, so, so called a number of things, like virtual backpack. Yes, so called a number of things like virtual backpacks. So, it's, some communities have moved towards having students continue to do work at home. A lot of it is because we have access to the internet and a lot of our homework now is done on the internet anyway and class assignments can be made available to students in that way. And so, Melrose Public Schools is one that did a great job in designing that program. So, teachers actually come in and design a program that shows in the scope and sequence of the months of December, January, February and March usually, where are you in your scope and sequence and what activity would you have a child do at home on, say, March, you know, 13th if there was no school? And so, that information is known and teachers worked on it ahead of time. And then when you get into the school year, if you have to cancel school, it is already known to the parents and the students and teachers can electronically communicate with the students about what to do. So, it counts as a school day. And the benefit of that is enormous. One, you don't make up the days at the end of the year and the benefit of that is cost. If you're making up days in June when it's 90 degrees and you have to have the buildings open, you have to have transportation, you have to have the air conditioning going, the teachers are certainly coming in, they're paid on a salary, so they're paid for 184 days. So, you have to start that ahead of time. So, Ryan, Harady and I were talking about it probably a month ago, principal of the Arthur T. Cummings. It has to be approved by the Department of Education, so it has to be a relatively elaborate plan. And as we were talking about it and as these snowstorms were building, four or five different North Shore schools, Winterford being one of them, agreed to get together to talk about, shouldn't we be doing this as a collaborative group so that when we submit it to the Department of Education, it will be approved for a whole bunch of North Shore schools? So, we're just getting into that now that we're all starting to experience these multiple days off. So, it is something that we're looking into so that hopefully will kickstart in the spring and move toward over the summer in terms of planning if we, as a group, feel as though it's something we can accomplish by the end of the school year. And again, Melrose did it last year, so people have been watching it and it is pretty cool because the students don't make up the days and there's a reasonable explanation of why the teachers should still be being paid. Well, part of their planning process when they're at home is continuing to build the program for the following school year, but they have to be in communication with their students if they have electricity. And if they don't, there are hard packets that need to be provided to students throughout the school year. So, I'm glad you brought that up. A couple more things on my superintendent's report. Preschool screening has been completed. We have a large amount of three and four-year-olds that came for our preschool screening and a number of students who have moved on to an evaluation process as part of the screening. We are in the process of looking at the total number of general ed. It's an inclusionary preschool, so those inclusion seats, those inclusion classrooms have eight general ed students and seven special ed students in a classroom together. So, we are in the process of looking at how many slots we have available. We have people who pay, general ed students who pay to come to our preschools. So, we are working on our staffing just to make sure we can meet the needs of all the students as those preschool screenings have gone on and working with early intervention about the projections of the incoming three-year-olds who are currently receiving services through EI, who would qualify for special education spots when they get here. Facilities, in terms of facilities, we did have damage during the storm. We put together a Google Doc for each building to dump in all of the building issues they had. So, every classroom teacher was asked to go through their classroom, check their windows, see if there was any storm damage and if so, indicate that in a Google Doc and it all filtered into one doc so that Mikhail Felipe, our facilities manager for the school, can now take all that information and see what's claimable under insurance or what is an ongoing issue such as the windows at the Middle High School. So, we have several windows here, several meaning more than five, that have had leaks in them since last year. Gilbane is well aware of that. Mikhail, our facilities manager, is on top of it. We went again through every single classroom in this building to make sure if those windows were leaking and still leaking or if they were new leaks, that those were included in our review with Gilbane. They were here on Monday of last week, going through them and those are, that's more of a building issue, you know, under sort of the warranty of the building. So, we're looking to have those issues rectified. Insurance claims on the other two issues we had with the bathroom, plumbing, as well as the pipe breaking, those are still in process and have not been fully vetted. As soon as those are done, I'll let you know. Our custodians continue to do an amazing job. They're exhausted. They've been, you know, these storms are tough on our guys. They do a great job. They keep me well-informed, calling me, texting me, letting me know how much salt has been put down. The collaboration with the DPW has also been very, very strong and very helpful, especially with some of our larger parking lots. So, hopefully tomorrow, these guys will be okay. I'll be checking in with them all day. Quick note on technology. I've spent a fair amount of time working with the two tech support gentlemen, Gio and Petro that we have, as well as some other folks around the inventory of all the technology that we have and looking at the warranties in this building because this building came with technology. So, looking at what the warranties look like and what the future looks like with those warranties, when are we going to have to start replacing things and what does that look like for us? We've also engaged a company called Balsam, who is the technology company that works for the town. They do the police station. I believe they do DPW and they do a large, large part of Revere with their police and fire. And so, we've asked them to come out and give us as a courtesy, they'll come out and give you a guesstimate of what they think your needs are so I can compare that to the current company that we're using as those contracts begin to expire for technology support systems so that we can make sure, one, we're tracking all of our equipment and, two, we're getting a good bang for our buck in terms of technology oversight. I know what we do struggle with based on my interviews with staff and the survey that I sent out. And we struggle with immediate gratification of some of our teacher needs when they're in the classroom. If a touchscreen goes down, a clear touch goes down or if the internet is not working well, having those immediate needs met. We use a lot of technology and a lot of internet. Now that we've had the network exchange, so we've had a big change out in our network to improve our Wi-Fi at the Cummings School and at the Town Hall, which hopefully will keep our, all of our iPads and Chromebooks and our teachers' laptops connected to the internet because we do use a lot of day-to-day internet books and YouTube things and various methods of utilizing the internet to teach our kids. So, we're hoping to get at least another thought or another view of what our system may need as well as a complete inventory of everything that we have. Ultimate goal there is come up with a replacement plan for what we have and a technology budget recommendation that will allow us to do that. Couple of other quick things. The first of the month, Jackie Lamont from the DA's office came out. She did a seminar on keeping kids safe. We did that based on a lot of the news media about a coach from Marblehead that some folks were calling to the school asking questions about what do we know about that, which we didn't know anything. But what we did know is we had parents who had concerns about their own child, not just because of that, but because of multiple news media around students and internet use and abuse. So, we wanted to give our parents the opportunity to ask questions to people who are in that field every day. So, Jackie came out and gave a presentation at the Arthur T. Cummings School. I attended it. It was very good. Talked about all the ways kids can sort of be enticed by people, but also by social media. We didn't have a great outcome in terms of parent involvement, but, and we had it on Facebook, we had it on social media, we sent letters home to parents. She will come back out again and I believe we're going to do another one in the spring to see if we can increase the number of parents that come. The parents that were there felt it was very useful and their intent was to spread the word so that we could do it again. Our drama, folks, our drama students went to, are going to the state finals. I don't know if anyone had the opportunity to see Faustus, but, or Faustus is it's pronounced. But I did and on the 24th, they are in the finals at 3:00 in Back, at the Back Bay Event Center. It was an amazing performance. The costumes that were designed by students, it looked like you were in Disney World at like some really cool show. It was so professionally done and the music was excellent and the lighting was excellent. What was awesome was watching the staff because the students put this together themselves and they orchestrate the entire thing. But to watch Steve Viera and Karen Kalinda, watching the students, it was amazing because you could see the energy in them and how happy they were and they should have been because the kids killed it. And they proved themselves because they made it to the finals again. They were state champions last year. I have no doubt they can pull it off again based on what I saw. So, I'm looking forward to that. And our vaping seminar got canceled because of the last snowstorm and that is rescheduled. I believe it's still April 2nd, Patty, but I'm not 100% sure.
I can't remember if it's the 2nd or the 4th.
Okay, we'll get, I'll get that before you. I can get that out to you just in case so people know. We will have it on Facebook. We will post it all over the place so people see because I went to the first one that we did and I learned a ton. I knew nothing about vaping. All I knew about vaping was my 10-year-old said it was just water that kids blow out of their mouth. And he was 10 and he knew about it and I didn't. And then when I went to the seminar and heard what it does to your body and your lungs, parents need to hear this. You know, they need to hear what vaping does and what these cigarettes can do to your body. So, we are running another one in collaboration with CASA and it got canceled because of our last snow day, so I look forward to that. And as far as my superintendent's report, that is it.
Personnel?
So, yes, so personnel. Appointments, I would like to just read the names of the folks that have been appointed for our fall coaching positions. For football, for the head coach, we have Mr. John Cattigan, assistant coach Rob Nimblett, assistant coach Matthew Love and assistant coach James Fusillo. We still have openings for JV and freshman coaching. Boys soccer, head coach is Kyle Gagin, assistant coach is RJ LaPresty and the JV position is still open. Mike Prechon? Yep. Girls soccer, head coach Tracy Matucci, assistant coach Julia Dawson and JV coach Jerry Gigliello. Volleyball head coach, JV coach and freshman coaching positions are still open. Golf head coach Johnny Cross and assistant head coach is Ben Semino. Cross country coach, Mr. Warren McPhail. Cheerleading coaches are Mari Johnson for the head coach, assistant coach Jenna, is it Marsha?
Marsha.
Marsha. And JV coach is Sophia Grayson. So, resignations. We have one resignation. Am I okay to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so, do you want me to read it or are you reading it?
He would be very disappointed if he didn't.
I know. So...
No.
Dear Superintendent, Mrs. Howard and members of the school committee, after speaking with my brother Jimmy Fabiano, a member of the school committee, I have decided to retire from coaching football at Winterford High School. Superintendent Howard, I hope that you are not upset about me leaving. It is time for me to retire. Over my 28 years as an assistant coach, I won many awards such as 2009 Coach of the Year, Northeast Conference Championship and Super Bowl Champ in 2006 and the Class of 2005 Hall of Fame Inductee. This is what the two of us have in common, just in case you didn't know. I would like to thank my mom Dolores and my father Joe Fabiano Sr. for supporting me during my time as coach. At this time, I am going to continue to help Mr. Sereno and Mr. Crombie as the assistant athletic director. Sincerely, Frankie Fabiano. So, although I'm sad to read that, Frankie and I had lots of conversation about the letter and I think Mr. Sereno and he spent some time writing the letter. Frankie's retirement, as we know, if that's his choice, that was his choice and he's decided that it is his time to go. I don't think we'll see lesser Frankie. I know that the two of us will always have a common bond, which is we are both Hall of Fame athletes and whenever we see each other, we have a little thing between us where we say, raise your hand if you're in the Hall of Fame. 99.9% of the time, we're the only two in the room doing that and we're both equally as happy and proud to be Hall of Fame athletes for Winter Public Schools. So, I don't know if anyone else has any comments they'd like to make about Frankie?
Obviously, first, from the family, we have to thank Coach Fusillo and Coach Driscoll for all the years of just including him from day one. Certainly made his life. And the athletic directors as well, today as well, how they include him and that whole inclusive environment that they have created from back in the 90s has made this school that much better. I just hope that next child gets that same opportunity.
Frankie's a legend and a leader in the school community. Anyone who knows Frankie will tell you, he has led inclusion in Winter Public Schools and I can speak to that honestly because I was part of his sort of, his era and his just prime example of why inclusion has to be. And, you know, Frankie taught many, many a people how to be good people and he really is the face of inclusion. Without Frankie and his cadre of people and Mr. Donleys of the world and the Dolores Fabianos of the world, inclusion in Winter Public Schools would definitely not be what it is today. So, we are and always have been and I hope to continue to be a school that sets an example far apart than any other school district in the Commonwealth, I can tell you that. People look to Winter Public Schools because of the past and because of Frankie and many of his friends. So, again, although I'm sad that he's retiring, I know we'll continue to see him. I like his role actually, as assistant DT. It's not a bad gig.
Like you said, he'll be around plenty of events. But just a quick story for the 28 years, he actually put on a uniform one practice and after that one practice, he came over to me and said, I think I want to be a manager. He gave playing a try.
Yeah, yeah.
He always knows what he wants to do and this is what he wants to do.
As the mother of a former football player, I will express gratitude for Frankie. He is, he even now remembers my son and asks us about him, even though it's been a few years and that I think is a great contribution. I know the kids appreciate it, having him be a part of the team.
Sure.
He's a special guy.
Yep.
Very, very.
So, I don't know if you need a motion to accept his resignation or if you have to do that, do resignations very often.
I don't think we should do that because we probably don't...
I really don't.
And, yeah, people will vote against it.
I'm not accepting.
All right. So, we're going to bypass the vote because it won't go through and then Frankie won't get to do what he wants to do and then I'll feel bad. So, moving on. Postings, at this point, we have none, I believe, and leave of absence, there are none.
Want to move through some of the business?
Yep, moving on to new business.
There's a lot of policies.
Yeah, so I put in your packet, take Frankie's note off my table here. I put in your packet the MCAD Guidance for Pregnant Workers and Fairness Act. This was issued in January 2018 and by April 1st, we need to notify any person who comes into the school district who is pregnant with this information. We'll include this in our new hire packets as well. And at the beginning of the school year, we do a civil rights packet where staff is given many of the civil rights documents that they need to read and be aware of year to year and sign off on. So, we will make sure that this is in their hands and I just wanted you to have a copy of that so that you could see that it was going out.
Will this change any of the language in the contract also?
So, I put it in the, this is a contract negotiation here, so I did put it in the contract file in the event that it has to be added. I'm going to ask Paul Hardnett, who's the attorney for the school district, if language has to be amended. I'm not 100% sure it does in the literature that came along with it, because I felt as though there may need to be a policy, a new policy, but I don't believe there does. But Paul will give us an advisory on that, just to make sure if it has to go in the contract that it gets in there. The next bit of information on the new business was for social media policy. We have had some requests from principals as well as some teachers inquiring about a social media policy more specific than the one that we have. So, I had just included a few examples of policy, one from Melrose and one from Swampscott, that spoke a little bit to some of the things that we have been dealing with or I have been dealing with as a superintendent. dealing with as a superintendent since coming on board here. So I would ask perhaps that this policy subcommittee take a peek at those and maybe weigh in and I would suggest developing a policy on social media for staff and students.
Can I make a motion to send this to the policy committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, have it.
The next item that I had under new business to do for, similar, is the Chromebook Policy Handbook. However, I'd like to table that to the next meeting and I will bring it to the next meeting. I have had some, as I stated earlier, some discussion with a couple of different technology firms that have some really tight policy examples that they're going to send to us. So I think we could wait till the next school committee meeting when I have some examples of other schools that you would be able to compare the one that is in this packet to and have deeper consideration. So I don't suggest we leave that yet. And the Miller Field Administrative Manual and Rental Schedule that is in your packet, Mr. Sereno, Mr. Crombie, and myself, in anticipation of Miller Field coming back to the school district as part of our school district's fields that we utilize for athletics, being a new field and having all kinds of new equipment on it, being a turf field which we have not yet managed, being a field that has a brand-new track on it, we haven't had a usable track in 20-some-odd years, many years, and a field house which is in our future. Mr. Sereno and Mr. Crombie and I felt the need to have something in place that speaks to how we use that field, who can use it, when they can use it, how it's to be used, how it's to be managed. If there was a facilities, there is from the last school committee, last superintendent, there was a facilities manager, I guess, in the budget, which still remains in the budget. What would that person's definition be? What would they be doing? Some policy around whether or not, a procedure around if we were to rent the field out, what would that look like? Who would need to be there to monitor that? What would the cost be? So Mr. Crombie, Mr. Sereno, and I spent a great deal of time looking at other school districts who had just put fields in, similar to ours, similar size. We learned a lot about how other towns run their fields. Some communities, the town runs the field themselves, even though it's, even though the school plays their athletics on it, they do all the rentals and they manage it. Some other communities, it's Parks and Rec that does all the management. And a fair amount of the communities, the school is running theirs. Some rent it out, some don't. So we took all that into consideration and put together a draft manual that I presented in your packet so that you could see the direction we were going.
And to make a motion to refer that to buildings and grounds?
Yes, that's what I would be asking for, so that they could take a peek at it, make some comment. It is a draft and we're open to tweaking it and doing whatever the committee feels is necessary to do to that. We just wanted you to have something to begin with.
Second motion.
Motion second by Ms. Powell. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, have it.
And then the last one to speak of is the Transportation RFP. Beginning of the school year, I want to say it was October, maybe even November, we talked about transportation needs. I believe we had a subcommittee meeting, I had attended a subcommittee meeting with the Transportation Subcommittee on the cost of transportation and some thoughts around that. I would, I, we suggested at that time that as we got closer to mid-school year, that we look at the cost once again. I forget which school committee meeting it was that we talked about sending an RFP out to get a price on the in-town run as well as athletics and field trips. So we sent to Salter, Healy, and Vocel and the, through the procurement process through the town, and we received only one RFP back and that was from Healy Bus. So my suggestion would be that the Transportation Subcommittee meet again to look at that. I do have also some updated information regarding the costs of transportation projected for FY '19 for athletics as well as the in-town run. As, and in addition to that, an advisory from Paul Hardnett, which I should have by tomorrow around providing transportation, not only to paying customers, but also to other students who qualify for free and reduced lunch and what the parameters are around that and what the school district is obligated to do. So I can provide that in more detail at a subcommittee.
Make a motion to refer to buildings, grounds, and transportation.
Setting that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
That was all I had.
Overnight trailer.
Yeah, the softball.
Oh, the softball overnight trip. So the softball team is, I believe, asking for an overnight trip to the Cape. That's an annual.
23rd.
Yes, that is their annual.
24th to 26th.
Correct. And Mr. Sereno is here in the event that you have questions about the trip.
I think, I think they do this every year. I know Coach Koffey runs a great program and I'd like to make a motion to approve the trip.
Second.
Second by Ms. Swoop. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, have it.
Thank you. Is it on?
School calendar.
School calendar, the 2018, 2019 school calendar. I will, I have sent out to the principals their thoughts on the school calendar this year. The fourth, I believe, is an election day, the third is Labor Day, the fourth is the primary and students are not in attendance in school on that day because of voting. Teachers can be in attendance, so it can be a professional development day for teachers. There has to be some decision by the committee which will present some options and suggestions at the next school committee to take a look at some calendars and determine whether we're going to come back to school before or after Labor Day in terms of students and teachers as well as what the half-days would look like and what would be accomplished during those half-days, the number of professional development days and the number of teacher conference days. So at the next school committee meeting, we will have some options prepared for you and some suggestions so that you have the opportunity to vote on that calendar.
Moving on to unfinished business.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading of the revised substance of use eventual education policy.
Second.
Motion by President Vecchia, second by Ms. Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, have it. Any public comment? Public relation, Mr. Matucci?
All set.
Fabiano?
All set.
All set. President Vecchia?
I would just like to congratulate the Winter Music Parents and the tremendous turn-up band together at the Yount Saturday night. It was standing among, it was just tons of people, tons of people. And special thanks to John Watkins, Jenny LeVie, and John Colino. You know, they were involved, just donating the entire, for the music that night. It was really a great, great night for the, great night for the music program. So congratulations to Band Together and of course, the parents that put it all together. Did a phenomenal job.
Ms. Powell?
Congratulations to our football participants, the middle schoolers took second place. Very excited they had shirts on, it's like, you know, winter nerds, but we're very happy with their parties, so we're happy to, happy to have them being just in that fusillade.
I loved Faustus, I thought it was great. And I saw Jim working diligently all day long. But it was, it was a, it was a great turnout and I loved the attitude of the kids and the audience. I thought that was terrific. And I, you could see the discipline in that group and obviously we've done a great job in catering for them, so.
Taj did the bookcases, just in case anyone wants to know. The young lady who was here tonight was responsible for crops.
Casting card.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Matucci. Second by President Vecchia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, have it. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone wants to know, the young lady who was here tonight was responsible for crops.
Casting card.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Matucci.
Second.
Second by President Vecchia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, have it. You're welcome.